Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:08. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. And is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. And tonight, we did approve four homeschooling requests, and that was approved, five zero. And it's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come to the microphone, young lady, and state your name.
Good evening. Susan Cicilline Bonanno, Narragansett Town Council, President Pro Tem. So thrilled to be here tonight. I wanted to come to say thank you to you all for the service that you've given to the town of Narragansett. Every year, we try to recognize many of the boards and commissions for the hard work that they do to make this town so great. And we could never do it without having all the wonderful schools and with all of you serving here at Narragansett. So tonight, I have some service pins to honor you all with. And on behalf of the town, we want to say thank you for all that you do for the students and the families of Narragansett. Yay! So with that, if you don't mind, I'll hand them over there. And it's just a nice pin to say thank you, and again, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Susan. We do appreciate that. And we also kind of extend our thanks to the town council members as well. We appreciate and we definitely value the partnership that we have with you and look forward to meeting with you again as we go into budget season. But send our sincere thanks to the town council that's very thoughtful. We appreciate that. And we appreciate you coming in person to say that and share that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Okay, so we're going to move on to oral reports. We'll start with the school committee. Alex, would you like to go first?
Sure. I just want to touch base on the Health and Wellness Committee. We met on October 7th, and we reviewed many goals and ideas for this upcoming year. We talked about how important it is to have that in-person connection between the students and teachers that was missing from the previous year. Topics covered included the importance of mental health awareness and ways to manage stress, having more social events in person as the smoothie bike, yoga for staff, the importance of physical activity and nutrition when developing routines, incorporating more fitness time, looking into family and consumer science opportunities for our older students, and mental health days and student absences. I'm sure Diane will also touch base on this, but yesterday Diane, Karen Festa, our Social Emotional Learning Coordinator and members of our Wellness Committee, attended the Breakfast for School Wellness Leaders 2021, sponsored by the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. It was a wonderful event, and it was really nice to be able to have this event in person, listening to all of the presenters and exhibitors. There were many different exhibitors that included Chartwell's, Recess Rocks, RI Food Policy Council, and the Rhode Island Department of Health. Thank you to Karen Wetherell, Kelly Swanson, and the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition for hosting this event.
Great, thank you, Alex. Diane, you have an update?
Just a short one. On October 14th, the Policy Subcommittee met, Tammy and myself, with our superintendent to review the Emergency Closure and Professional Development, professional learning policy that will have its first reading tonight. And as Alex said, we attended the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Breakfast yesterday. And I'll just add that the main speaker was Dr. Douglas McClure, who spoke on social, emotional learning in relationship to health. And it was a very interesting talk, interesting day.
Great, thank you, Diane. And no one else has a report? Okay, so we are moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings?
Thanks, Tammy. Well, this evening, the bulk of my report is really having to do with the school system goals and our district development plan. And so, you know, we certainly have a hard copy of that that went out in the board packet that's available if people want to download it. But tonight, I'm going to hit some highlights of that. And so, you know, I'll begin just by saying that our school system plan is really based on our mission. And we are actually in the fifth year of this mission statement and in the school district goals. So as we go through this last year of the cycle, we're looking toward kind of examining the data that we gather towards this five-year cycle. And then this summer, we'll revisit the mission, vision, goals of the district with the school committee, get input from the community, just to see if there's any tweaks or revisions that we want to do in that way. But just as a reminder, right, our, the mission statement is that the Narragansett school system will enable every student to develop the knowledge, skills, and habits of mind necessary to be a lifelong learner and productive citizen by establishing rigorous academic expectations, supporting caring, healthy, and safe environments, and in creating personalized, innovative, and engaging learning experiences. And you will see that I color-coded our mission statement so that if you look at that, it really divides up into our four main goals. And so, our goals really try to align with the mission statement as we go forward. So if we start to think about what are we trying to do as a school system? You know, we are trying to align our work that goes from the mission of the school system to the goals that we're doing in our district mission and core values, to the district development plan, right, which is our district strategic actions that we do going forward. And then that goes into the school development plans and the teacher SLOs that are happening in the classroom. And so, everything should be aligned back to that school district mission. Now, as you all know, right, we've been in a really disrupted time in schools, and we've been doing a lot of just trying to stay afloat, you know, so keeping the schools open. But our teachers have been doing a wonderful job of keeping our learning going. We've had to put a lot of supports in place, and you'll see that in the things that I'll talk about today. So at our next meeting in November, our school principals will come, and they will talk about their school development plans. They need a little bit more time. They couldn't do it tonight just because they wanted to vet it with their faculty and get a little more feedback from their own communities. But they'll be presenting those to you at our next school committee meeting. So for us, it's really important for us to look at what are our goals? And in the plan that I know you all had a chance to see beforehand, you're going to see what our indicators of progress are. So, you know, one of the things that we really emphasize is this whole idea of a cycle of improvement. So the goals that we're looking at today are really based on our work from last year and the year before that identifies for us where do we need to put our attention? What is the data that we're gathering? And that data comes from our academic data, so that comes from just the grades that we see, it's from our internal kind of progress monitoring, it's from the external progress monitoring, you know, from RICAS and SAT. I'll be honest, the only thing that we've gotten back is the SAT. We have yet to see the RICAS that they took last year, so it makes it a little bit difficult. I think they're getting put out next week, I'm hopeful, right? And we'll start to see some of those things. But that really gets this idea of a cycle of improvement. What do we do? We look at the relevant data, we determine our goals, we kind of develop a strategy as we go forward, we design and execute our actions, and that's really the district and school development planning that we're going over now. We then evaluate how we do, we reflect, and then reexamine the data. And that's the results and outcomes work that we'll do at the end of the, you know, we do it mid-year certainly, so we know we're on the right course. And then we do it again at end of year to make sure that we're learning from what we did this, this school year and constantly trying to improve. So it's just a cycle that we continue to go through year after year. And for us, and what I want to reemphasize, is this idea of the instructional core, right? This idea of the interaction of student, teacher, and content is at the very heart of everything that we do. So if the actions that we're taking are not related to the instructional core, we have to be asking ourselves, why are we doing this? Right? Because it should be working on what is that interaction between teacher, student, and content? All of the rings that kind of surround that interaction are there to support that work, right, of what happens in the classroom? And if we're doing things that are not related to that, we have to examine that and say, what's driving that and how does it relate to what's happening in the classroom? And there have been things that we have said, this is not related to our core mission, so we're not going to be doing that anymore. Okay? So, Goal One, right, for us is to prepare, you know, our four goals are to prepare students with the knowledge, skills, habits of mind, to meet the challenges of local, national, and global citizenship. And this is really our academic goals, right? So these are the things that we, what are the academic skills, habits of mind that we want kids to know and be able to do. Goal Two is to attract, retain, and support high-quality staff, and that's structure, supports, and resources. So that's really around, do we have the structures and systems in place? Do we have great buildings? Do we have adequate staff? Do we have the right resources in place? Is transportation working? All these things need to be in place in order for learning to happen, right? So it doesn't just happen by magic. We got to have this infrastructure there. And the most important thing that we do, and I know you've heard me say this over and over again, is hire great people and continue to support them once they're in the job, right? And that's the most important thing that we do around our staffing and our capacity. The third thing is to create a safe and respectful learning community where all students are known, cared for, and held to high expectations. And again, that is critically important. So if you think about our students that are overcoming challenges, you think about students who have diverse backgrounds, if you have students who are overcoming a disability, right? Those are all things that we're there to support them with and make sure that they are still held to high expectations and are given the support to reach those high expectations. And Goal Four is really around student engagement, voice, and choice. And that is, you know, we want students to be engaged in their learning process. We want students to be a part of what we're doing. We want students to have voice. We want students to feel a sense of belonging. So for us, really, what I did was break down, I didn't just cut and paste the whole plan. You had a chance to look at that already. But what I did do is just kind of pick out some highlights to talk through with you all. As we go through, feel free to ask me questions, or if there are things that you saw on the plan that I might not have put in kind of the broader overview, happy to talk about that as well. So in Goal One, what I, for all of them, what I really did was to kind of say, here's our district's strategic action, and here's the thing that we're focusing on in order to make this goal come to life. This year in particular, analyzing student learning data to target support and focus instruction is really essential because we have students that are all over the place. We have students that haven't been in school in a year. We have students that have reacted to the pandemic in various ways. And we have new academic demands and levels of rigor that we're really pushing on for students. A lot of students need acceleration or support to reach those goals. So for us, one of the highlights and that we're going to continue to do this year is that individual, small group tutoring for students that were struggling. So that was highly successful for us last spring. That was one of the things that we learned a great deal about. We have the resources in order to support that this year through some of the grants that we've gotten through from COVID. And so, we're going to continue to maintain that intervention. So we're actually meeting on that early next week to start to match kids to tutors and get that piece going again. Focused on instructional core and level of rigor of learning tasks. And that's kind of the work that we did early in this year with Karen Haas, who is a national expert around cognitive rigor. And for us, what we are really trying to ensure is that students are engaged in learning tasks, and by rigor, we don't mean more. We mean more challenging in terms of stepping up the access to accessing the grade-level standards, right? And so, with that, we're trying to do engaging learning tasks. We have two new fabulous instructional coaches this year. You know, we will find the time for them to come meet with you. Both of them have been doing an excellent job. We were really ready for, you know, kind of people with fresh eyes to come in and do some instructional coaching with us, both vastly experienced, experts in their field. You know, I'm really thrilled with the work that they've been doing with Gail around kind of setting up some of the instructional coaching that we've been doing, and they've been grounding it in the data. So I sat in on a data dive on the math SAT, was that this morning? It might have been this morning, either this morning or yesterday, and where we went really deep on some of the pieces that students were doing, looking at item by item and kind of discovering where are the weaknesses in our program. And so, they're guiding those conversations to help teachers with their instruction. Two, math is a big deal for us this year. We're pushing really hard on math. There have been some significant changes in our math pathway, if you recall. We're trying to make sure that every student has the chance to access high-level math in grade 11 and 12 at least, right? If not before. That means that we've kind of shifted the pathways a little bit. And if students are taking Algebra I now in eighth grade, they're taking it to high school, there's still opportunities for honors pods as they go through grade seven and eight. It's better aligned to the standards, we believe. And, you know, we are looking forward to some increases in student achievement with that, right? It's early in the progress. We have new resources, we have a new pathway, we have new coaching, so we're really hoping for some real progress in that area. Our work with Vision of the Graduate and High School Schedule will be kind of coming forth as we get through this fall. We had to work through a little peak of COVID before we could get to that, right? But we're working on that now. So we're starting to work with the High School Scheduling Committee, I believe, next week to start to think about different options and to see what would best fit both the mission of the school and some of the new regulations that are coming out. So we have work-based learning regulations, we have some talk about the change of secondary regulations at the state level, and so we want to be ahead of that. I'm actually involved in that work a little bit, so we're getting good insight to that. So we're playing ahead for those pieces. And again, interventions at all levels are really important. And, you know, an early warning system for students at risk of not completing high school, we do a couple of times a quarter, go through and really look at some critical data pieces on our high school and middle school students and make interventions for students that are not on track.
Pete, I have a quick question just on the first bullet. So I know you're still in the planning stages, but that individual and small group tutoring, are you talking about just after school and at which building?
So all three buildings. We do do it during school as well, as much as we're allowed with our interventionists and, but it's a lot of after-school and before-school as well.
Thank you.
And again, the success of that program really taught us last year, like, we took a hard look at our intervention programs and how we were running them and significantly shifted them in several buildings to more model what we were doing before and after school last spring.
I have one question as well. So the two instructional coaches that you have now, are they working across K-12?
They are.
Wow.
So they're doing a great job. Most of their focus right now is kind of six-twelve because we have new resources and new programs in the secondary, in ELA and in mathematics, but they are K-12, absolutely. So our Goal Two, Goal Two, right, is around our staff, you know, and that's really building capacity for systemic and student learning. And again, that's really looking at our school schedules. So Mary Ann made some significant changes to her schedule, as did Lisa this year, right? And so, how she's, how is she really doing that? So Lisa adjusted her schedule this year to provide every grade-level teacher multiple times for common planning throughout the school year, multiple times per week. So they are now able to plan their lessons together, look at data together, kind of do lots of things that weren't available to them in their old schedule. And so, kind of training those team leaders to facilitate those conversations, do the data, and Lisa and Tracy are doing that, and I'm doing some of the training of the team leaders. Melissa's doing a great job. You know, our special education team has been doing professional learning sessions that Melissa has been leading at each school and then with individual teachers and small groups of teachers around specialized instruction. And so, Melissa met with each faculty and really talked about the difference between kind of just supporting students in class and giving specialized instruction. And that specialized instruction is critical, so we're doing, we did a session with it, with the admin team over the summer. So, you know, Melissa's doing a great job kind of refreshing and teaching all of us around some of the more recent developments and thinking around specialized instruction. So that's been really powerful. We do have RIDE Required Reading Professional Development, so the Right to Read Act requires, you know, many hours of PD for our elementary teachers, and I think it's around 10 or 12 hours for our non-reading teaching teachers. And so, they're all engaged in that. And then certainly, the auditorium is going to be a major capital push this year, along with the preschool playground, ventilation, and some other projects. Goal Three, you know, is safe, healthy, and equitable school environment. So as you know, like, safe and healthy right now is all about COVID mitigation, right? And all the work that we've been doing there, it's hard to believe we've been doing this for almost two years now. So we continue to implement, you know, all of those health measures where I think, again, staying ahead of it, Steve Gormley has done an absolutely wonderful job of coordinating those pieces, our nurses, I can't say enough good things about the work that they've been doing. You know, we have pretty good engagement with the regular testing, so we've been able to really support our students in that. Suicide prevention is huge, and so we continue to support, you know, our staff in kind of learning the signs of suicide, implementing those pieces, screening kids. Mental health is a huge factor right now. You know, we have a lot of kids suffering, so we're on the lookout for that. There is new, relatively new, school improvement team regulations that are out there, so every school is kind of working on enhancing their school improvement team, getting more community buy-in, more students and parents on that, on that piece for each school. And of course, the Diversity and Equity Committee is continuing to meet and do training and kind of raise our community awareness around all kids feeling a sense of belonging, right? So all those things are really critical.
Pete, just a quick question on the second bullet about faculty and staff being trained in suicide prevention. It says, "Per the requirements outlined in recent legislation," can you explain what the...
Sure. So last legislative session, there was a law, and I know it has a particular name that escapes me right at this moment, but that is requiring all schools to educate staff on suicide prevention. It's something that we do every year anyway, so it kind of falls right in line with our practices. But there's some further pieces of the, of the bill that kind of help us. So they're providing resources and some funding to get some of our mental health staff trained as a trainer for mental health first aid, so we will be engaging in that. And there's some suggested curricula that are slightly different than what we do, but they overlap. It's all, it's the same stuff, just different letters. And so, we are going to be looking at that curricula. We want to keep it aligned with the rest of the state and be talking the same language.
I just was, didn't know if it got into the level of detail, like, every staff member will receive some training, or if it's more?
It does.
Every school will have staff trained, so whether it's the mental health consult team or...
So it gets...
I don't really need to know the particulars. I was just more curious, like, with the right to read, it was very specific, like, all, you know, teachers, specialists, this, you know, I didn't know the mental health requirements, if it was just every school shall have trained staff, or if it's every staff member will be trained, you know?
So it is, every staff member will be trained in suicide prevention, and then every school should have some trainers around mental health first aid. With, kind of doing it from memory, I know there are some nuances there, but that's the, the idea, which I think I fully support, is you want teachers to be aware of if a student is in crisis, what are the proper steps that they should take, right? How do we support that student in crisis? Or how do we even recognize when they're in crisis? And those are the things that this training covers. How do we encourage other students to come forward if they have, you know, a friend or a peer that they feel is hurting? And so, there's, there's lots with that. I think we've had generous support from the Chad O'Brien Foundation in order to raise awareness of that within our own community, and we've taken full advantage of that, and we have great mental health support staff in that area.
Great, thank you.
So in Goal Four is student engagement, voice, and choice. This is really kind of a big thing, you know, particularly, we want it to be across all schools, particularly at our high school level. You know, we want engaging learning tasks where students have some choice within their learning and their day-to-day. I think that's really important. What we also have going, and this is a really big piece, is the work-based learning requirement. So all students have to complete 40 hours of work-based learning. So we have to look at our structures and systems to say, how are all students going to complete this? We're pretty good at it with our CTE students, but we have some thinking to do about how do we do it with students who are not involved in CTE. And so, you know, we're really tackling that this year, and I think that's going to be a part of our Vision of the Graduate and scheduling conversations as we go forward. Curriculum Academy continues to develop key units, and that's really kind of tied to the work that we've been doing with Karen Haas. And then the secondary requirements, there's been some, we can do a, you know, have that be a part of a different meeting, but there's been some interesting conversation around what are the, what are the requirements that colleges are looking for versus what are the requirements that are currently in the regs? And kind of making some adjustments to the regs to better reflect what colleges are asking for. And quite honestly, not just colleges, we have lots of kids that are going straight into trades or straight into work, and what are the skills that they need as well? So those are our four big goals. And again, you know, it goes into much deeper detail in what the indicators of progress are, you know, within the actual development plan. But I'll take any questions that you all have.
I just want to commend you on how well-written this plan is. I thought it was very thorough, and I was really, really impressed. And just pointing out just the amount of time and really how well-written it was, I really appreciated. Just a quick question on Goal Four, to develop student engagement, identity, voice, and choice. I was wondering if you could elaborate on the Student Advisory Council? Is that a new initiative? And is there any way that a member or representative from the Student Advisory Council could potentially come to future meetings and share with us their perspectives?
I think they could, so we haven't put that in place yet, right? And we've been a little tripped up with COVID with getting that forward, but my goal is to have that in place by, really by mid-year or early spring. You know, I think our vision is to have that be kind of some students from each building, right, that are a part of that initially. And then ultimately, the committee could make the decision whether they want to have a student representative as a non-voting member of the committee that comes to meetings.
Great. Great. And I think that's all I have for now. If I have another question, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Diane?
I just have one quick question, also on goal four, the second bullet. The 40 hours, is that over the four years, or is that per year?
It's over four years.
Any other questions from anyone? Well, thank you, Pete. We really appreciate the update. I think the ongoing work looks fantastic, very impressive. Thank you.
Thanks. You know, the only other thing that I'll call your attention to is the PD overview that's at the end, okay? And just so, for you all, that's really related to our support of staff in goal two. And, you know, again, we have to provide the training and the resources. We can't expect people to do something that we haven't yet taught them how to do. And so we can really space that out, and Gail does a great job in organizing that and moving that forward.
I'm really glad we're going to get to see the school development plans next month.
Yes.
Because they flow right from the same goals.
They do, absolutely.
I have a question for you. So what is the next step in this process of revising and developing your new plan?
So it's gone kind of out to the school principals. They've had a lot of input in that. You know, we certainly give it to the school committee, right? So any input you have, we certainly try to kind of incorporate that as we go forward. Next step is that we implement, right? And we start to look at that. We do a mid-year review with all of the principals because their school development plans are based on this. So you'll hear from them next week where they really get into the nitty-gritty of how they're doing some of these pieces. And then we do that review. And then in June, really June and July, we're, May, June, and July, we're gathering all the data. In July, we'll do a results and outcomes where we really look at this plan. I'll present with the school committee. Here's what we said that we were going to try to do. Here's what worked. Here's what didn't work. Here's the data we have to inform these pieces. And then we adjust and kind of adjust it for the following year based on those results and outcomes and that data, and start to figure out what's next.
So the original set of goals, was that developed from a larger committee? And now this is just a revised version? So it was a smaller committee? It wasn't so inclusive of like it was before?
Correct. And so, again, if the committee's ready to do this this summer, you could do a larger piece of, okay, you know, we're looking to update our goals, right? You could do some focus groups. You could do some pieces, kind of really looking at that long-term strategic plan and revise any goals that you want to revise in order to reflect kind of what's happening in the community. Then you would update those goals. And subsequently, the district development plan would be adjusted to reflect those goals going forward.
Any other questions for Pete? Anything else in your superintendent's report?
Just that it is Spirit Week at the high school, and so lots of fun over there. Today was Decades Day, I believe, and we're having a homecoming dance on Saturday. So we're excited for the kids to be able to do that. Sports teams continue to roll. Volleyball, I believe, is still undefeated. And the football team is having a great season, and as are our soccer teams. So we're really proud of all of them. Swimming, again, had an excellent season this fall, girl swimming. So, you know, we're really happy with all of them. Congratulations to all those student athletes.
Great, thank you. All right, we are on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent to approve consent agenda items, CA 1A, CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I just had one question on the budget transfers. And I don't know if I just missed this, but what is the Eleanor Briggs Community Partnership Program at NES that the money was being transferred into support?
So that is a program, and we discussed this. It's part of our special education program where we are bringing students back from outplacement. And so that is, Eleanor Briggs is our kind of new internal program where we support students and have had them back in the school, but they require kind of supports beyond what our staff can give. And so their staff is working with our staff to support students, to keep them in our district and be able to access learning.
It's like our communities and schools for special ed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions about any consent agenda items? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. On to the budget report, Karen.
Expenditures for the three months ended September 30th, 2021, And that's 14.89% of our budget. Expenditures and accumstances, total of $27,712,79.61. And that's 83.45% of our budget.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Karen? All right, thank you. So we are on to school committee business. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent to approve the first read of the 21-22 emergency closure and professional learning policy for the Narragansett School System?
So moved.
Discussion? So Pete, can you kind of, I know we talked through this quite a bit in our policy subcommittee meeting, but can you kind of give a high-level context about what's happening at the state level with this? How we landed with this?
Sure. So, you know, after we went through the process, there was legislation before we had COVID that would allow schools to do remote learning on an emergency closure day. There wasn't a lot of movement on that because the regulations weren't super clear, and I think no one quite knew what to do with it and what capacity you needed to have. Since COVID, with all the things that we've learned and how to do remote learning, RIDE has revised their regulations to make them a little bit more accessible. And so we recently got their, their kind of regs around remote learning. And at the crux of it is, you can do four remote learning days, four professional learning days during the school year. And you can do up to five remote learning days for other reasons, including emergency closure. You have to come up with a plan. You have to submit it to RIDE, which we are in the process of doing. You know, have a schedule of kind of all those different pieces. You know, what is in this policy is essentially giving the school committee the discretion when you design your school calendar, right? Whether you want to have, whether you want to use remote learning on any professional learning or emergency closure days. And so what the, what the policy essentially says is, when you set the calendar, you could indicate, well, geez, the first two remote, you know, the first two emergency closure days, if possible, you know, should be kind of full closures to get made up at the end of the year, right? Let the kids play in the snow and let those things go forward, okay? At a certain point, you could choose, like, any more than two should be remote learning days because then we're really digging in to the end of the summer. It also has the caveat that a remote learning day might not be possible, even if it's designated as a remote learning day, because there might be power outages. There might not be, you know, access, maybe nobody brought their computers home. It was a big surprise of something that happened. And so it does give the superintendent or designate discretion to say, listen, no one's ready for a remote learning day. This would be a waste of a day. This is going to be a makeup day, and we'll do a remote learning day on a different day, okay? Again, if we have a, you know, a really cold day in November, I'm making this up, right? And, you know, it's too cold to go to the bus stop, and we have to cancel school, okay? And everyone has internet access, but there's no snow, and no one can go outside? That should probably be a remote learning day, right? Because, you know, no one's out playing in the snow on that day. I recognize, and I think that I want the committee to kind of have the discretion with the calendar to kind of set this how the committee wishes to set it going forward. That's why we didn't put into the policy, there'll be two makeup days, right? We kind of tied it to something that you renew every year with the calendar. And so the committee will have the discretion, according to this policy, to say, all emergency days should be remote learning days if possible, or a certain number of days should be remote learning days if possible. And so that gives you the power, when you set the calendar, to be able to do that. My suggestion to you would be, if you do want to approve this policy, is that the next meeting, when you do a second read, you could do an amendment to the this year's school calendar to allow remote learning days on emergency closure days, if you so choose.
So when you talked about, for example, the first two days could be traditional, you know, kind of snow days, was that a hypothetical? Or next month, is that what, is that what you'll actually recommend to us? Is that what you're thinking?
So what I would recommend to you is that you should, you would say, the committee would recommend, right, that two, you know, two emergency closure days should be made up at the end of the school year, and beyond those emergency, they should be remote learning days, right? And that would give the ability for us to, quite honestly, analyze the weather and say what makes sense. So I, you know, this is new for all of us, right? But I would just say, if you got into a recommendation to say, the first and the second have to be makeup days, then, you know, that could, we have had in the past where we've closed in September because, you know, the water was bad, right? And that could have been a remote learning day, right? Where people were able to get safe drinking water within their homes, but weren't able to get it at school. That would have been an effective remote learning day. But there's days later in that year that probably should have been made up, you know, makeup days, like full cancellations, because the weather and the power, the weather was out, and the power was out, and there was snow on the ground.
Ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, I mean, you may not know off the top of your head, but you might. What day of the week is our current last day scheduled for?
That's a great question.
Because we know that there are logistics and complications with how far until another week, or et cetera, that that could pose for families, staff, students, et cetera.
I don't know off the top of my head. Lauren's going to look it up for us right now, though.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
So we'd be falling within the same week.
Right.
Which is ideal.
Yes, absolutely. And I think we are really always pretty aware of that. And we're also very aware of when graduation is, right? And kind of all of those pieces. So, you know, I think in Narragansett in particular, you have that tension about wanting to get out of school in a seaside community. But at the same time, we know that remote learning isn't as good as in-person learning, right? And we want the kids in school as much as we can. We also understand, I think, that there is a cultural celebration of a snow day. That's a part, that's in the water, so to speak, in New England. That fully going just to remote learning, no matter what, on a snow day just might not be practical. Because in many cases, especially here, we have a lot of power outages on a true snow day.
They do.
Right? And that can be really disruptive to a remote learning day.
Two years ago, I remember the elementary school not having power for almost a week.
I remember it well, Justin, yes.
Just a demonstration of like, that case, the school was closed, but I think other people still suffered power outages.
Yes.
We do. It's unfortunate.
Under the emergency closure, we specify up to the five emergency days. And if I understood what you said, the professional learning's up to four?
Correct.
So I would like to suggest the edit that we mentioned, similar to the emergency closure. That for professional learning, it reads additionally, the committee may designate up to four district-wide professional learning days. Just to keep it consistent.
Great.
I really liked the flexibility of all the language because you gave very specific, concrete examples that make sense. Like, if we said, "The first two days shall be this," it takes away that flexibility. Like you said, if there's a water main break, or there's something where kids could still totally learn at home. And like you said, you never know. Sometimes it's like, oh, we're supposed to get three inches of snow, and then it's 10 inches of snow and massive power outages or whatever. So I think the policy gives us flexibility. We can, you know, message to families in the calendar, the expectations. But ultimately, it's going to be the messaging that comes out from the superintendent the night before potential closings or that morning about, you know, what type of learning day it is. And so I think, I think that it's thoughtful how the policy is written. And was this something that you kind of just came up with? Or is there, is there a draft of this somewhat from RIDE? Or how did you land on this? Because I really like it.
No, I just wrote it. There is not a model policy. So, you know, so it's, it may be just kind of specific to Narragansett, but this, you know, it seems to kind of reflect what the committee was hoping for.
Well, it's the end of October. So I know Alex was asking about this for a long time, and we're like waiting and waiting and waiting for something to come out from RIDE. But at some point, you have to be the one that then you can share with fellow superintendents, just like with your COVID policy. I mean, at some point, if RIDE doesn't do it, some district has to start and get the ball rolling, and...
Right.
So, good job again, Pete.
Do we know what other districts are doing or considering regarding these emergency days?
Great, great question. I do not think anyone really has much of a plan yet. And I'm not sure anyone has put it into policy yet. So we're probably one of the first to approve a policy like this. I do know that everyone is kind of on the same wavelength in terms of being worried about differing weather conditions and what is an appropriate distance learning day and what is not. And so we're trying to accommodate that flexibility. And I think one of the things that you touched on, Tammy, that I will reemphasize is that communication is really important with this. And so, you know, I typically try to communicate to parents, if it's an iffy weather situation, you know, I will often say, the weather in Narragansett is slightly different than it is in surrounding areas. So we're going to, I know everyone around us is canceled. I have to wait until the morning because, you know, it might be different here. And I get various reactions to that, but we're really trying to keep as many kids in school as we can. We know it's not easy for families if we cancel school. It's very disruptive. People have work obligations that can't be moved outside of the home. And so we try to be really respectful of that when we're thinking about what's happening with the school day.
I just also wanted to just ask about the kind of material that would be taught during a planned distance learning day? Because I know RIDE goes about, talking about unscheduled distance learning days. And they even mentioned right in there that it's not the best time for instruction on a new idea or concept, but maybe better used to reinforce previously learned concepts. I was just wondering just what kind of concepts would be taught from a planned distance learning day when we know firsthand how important it is to have instruction in person? But obviously, we're taking everything into consideration, but I was just curious.
If it was a planned distance learning day, or even unplanned, it would be a synchronous day. So teachers would be zooming. They would be working with their students. They would be kind of doing some direct instruction. You know, we're fortunate in that we have the technological resources here in Narragansett to support that sort of higher-quality distance learning. And we know that it is more disruptive on a long-term scale. But we also know that our teachers are pretty good at this now, right? And they know how to design instructions so that, you know, kids are able to get something out of that day. And it may be, you know, kind of individual counseling or working with them, maybe working on a long-term project. It may be kind of conferring with other kids, but they know how to do this. And so I do not think that we have to lessen kind of the expectation on a distant learning day. I think the modality switches a little bit. But I think that, you know, kind of going forward, it's not a lost day.
Okay. Okay. And just one other question, I would ask not only you, but the rest of the school committee, and I know we don't, we don't have the luxury of time, it's great that we're actually moving the way we are right now, actually. Do we want to, or have we already pulled the students, or the parents, the faculty, anyone, to get additional feedback as to how they feel about the handling of snow days? Because obviously, as a former student, as we all are, nobody wants to take away the, the dreams, the memories from, that were made during snow days, especially here in New England, so I was just curious to hear if we wanted to get additional feedback.
That's certainly up to the committee, if they want to do that, we can send something out.
I think if we circle back to what is the purpose of what we're doing, is we're trying to put a policy in place that gives us the flexibility, like if we, if we don't end up with a policy, then our only choice is what we had pre-COVID, which was, it's a closure, you make it up, it's a closure, you make it up, it's a closure, you make it up. The policy is just giving us the flexibility to have the remote learning days, so I don't think it's as much, if you surveyed, you know, kids, if we have a snow day, would you rather have remote learning that day, or would you rather make it up in June? I think the answer is, like, most people are probably okay with one or two, but don't want to do five or six, you know what I mean? It's, I guess my question would be, if we surveyed people, what would we do with that information to change the policy? You know what I mean? Like, it would, you know what I mean? Because our policy isn't saying that every snow day will count as a remote learning day, and there will be no fun and joy, you know? It's, it's just, it's a policy in place to give us a structure, so I guess my question is, I understand you're wondering how people are thinking and feeling, but having that data, is it going to change how we write our policy?
Especially because this is like to give us an out if something, like an emergency happens again, this is to give us those options, it's not so much a way to go forward as it is a reaction.
I think I would be more interested in, let's see how it plays out this year, and then gather some survey data at the spring, when we're, you know, at the end of the school, you know, whatever, in the spring, then we see how it plays out, because then, if you're dipping people and we had, you know, four stormy days, and two of them we had remote learning, but that was a big barrier for a lot of people because they didn't bring their laptop home that night, and then they felt like they missed out, and, you know, I don't know, it was kind of like their level of satisfaction with, you know, okay, we had two snow days that were that, you know, like, I don't know, I think it's, I think it's a little premature to survey people, like, how, which would you prefer? Because we're not even saying, you know, here's a choice, we're just, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, I think it, it could affect the language or the way it's in which it's framed. I know, obviously, the flexibility is great, but I, it could also affect, you know, how many snow days, or, you know, just the volume and the number, or just, just the way in which it's written, but you actually made an interesting point. Say, for example, a student forgets their laptop, they only have their laptop, and that's their only source of being able to connect to the classroom. Say there's an unplanned emergency for this one student, and he forgets his laptop in school, he has no way of accessing the school in an emergency, how is he going to tune into his class?
And I think, I'm guessing that there, like, whenever you try to institute something, there's always going to be outliers and struggles, like, for example, we're telling kids and parents, if your child is sick and has COVID symptoms, stay home. Well, you don't necessarily know ahead of time when you're going to be sick, so we may have kids that their laptop is in school, and then they woke up the next morning, they have COVID symptoms, and now they're sick, and now they don't have their laptop. So then it's, you know, it's tricky, if they don't have any materials at home, they don't have their laptop, then they're going to have to, again, like, pre-COVID, well, when you're back to school, you've got to get caught up and make that work. I mean, there's, I think there's definitely, when there's a very unplanned storm, which happens in New England, there could be kids that are completely reliant on their school device and may not have it. So I think it's, there's always going to be outliers, and I think that's going to be up to the teachers, obviously not to penalize someone whose laptop they can see is on the counter at school, and they couldn't, you know, they couldn't log in, you know, then I think it's, they can't be penalized, and then it's not going to be new instruction that day, so how are you going to make sure that that child has the opportunity to get the extra practice or support that they need? You're never going to be able to get 100%, because even if most of town has internet access, but then there's some area in Bonnet Shores or something that doesn't, you know, there could be a pocket of kids, like, I had no internet, or I had no internet from seven in the morning till one, and then it came back on at one, so I missed the whole morning. So I think it's just, we can't penalize kids, we try to make a decision for the, for the masses, and then having that flexibility of, we may say it's a remote learning day, not realizing how many people didn't lose power, and then if someone's got a math class, and they do a Zoom lesson, and there's only two kids there, and they're like texting each other, I have no internet, then the teacher, you know, we'll have to kind of, you know, figure that stuff out, we got to kind of live through it to see how it plays out.
We do, and it's new for all of us, and, you know, what I would say is, in my experience in Narragansett, there are some storms that are clearly school cancellation makeup days, right? And there have been other storms that it is dangerous driving, and because of that, we can't get to school in a timely or safe way, but the bulk of the mid-morning to the kind of early afternoon is a little bit more clear and accessible when people have power. And so, again, I'm not a weather person, right? We really kind of do our best to make judgments that keep students and staff as safe as possible, and at the same time, we don't want to get in a place where we're going to school until the end of June. And so, you know, we'll try to make good choices around that. I will guarantee you, there, there will be times where the information we have is not what plays out once the storm hits, and we will get some feedback that will question the decision, and we'll learn from that and try to do better on the next one. You know, and we really do try to make those decisions about emergency closure in the interest of keeping everyone safe, you know, the, there, we have staff coming from far away, we have CTE students coming from districts from all over the state, and so we do have to be really cognizant of what the road conditions are, certainly in Narragansett, but also kind of a, a little bit of a wider ring, because we have so many people that are affected by that.
I, I know we keep talking about inclement weather, but when, the way this is written, when we're talking about emergency closures, it's much broader than that.
Right.
And I appreciate the flexibility in this policy for the district, for you to be able to make that decision, that yes, it's a snow day, it's a snow day, or it's an emergency closure for this, we need to offer distance learning as an option so we can continue to move forward academically. So I just wanted to call that out as well, and I appreciate the idea of the snow day, but the way this policy is written, it just affords that, that flexibility to make the best decision for the community at that time, whether or not weather-related, and I just wanted to call that out again.
Thanks.
So Alex, is that, you seem agreeable to that, that we can
I don't know.
move forward with this, we'll put this up for a second read next month, and we can talk about if we want to do some type of survey in the spring after we kind of live through it, and?
Yes, I, just, just for my understanding, and just to reiterate, are we talking about what, like, when, when and if this is approved? Are we going to be like re-looking at the calendar, as you said, and like assigning, saying, okay, so the first three emergency closures for the rest of the year will be snow days or whatever, and then everyone after that will designate as one of the five emergency closure days, distance learning?
Right.
So I think, yeah, I think no, and that's why I got confused.
Okay.
Purposely, no, for all the things we just talked about, because we don't want to box ourselves into, the first three shall be this, because
Right, okay.
for all the reasons we said.
Okay.
The first one may be a foot of snow, we lose power, the second one may just be super icy roads, dangerous travel, but plenty of Wi-Fi, we just don't want to box ourselves in, it's staying flexible. That's what my brain thought at first, too.
No, I got it.
The first two are, but it's, it's, the flexibility is important, there's a water main break.
Yes.
That could be number one or number two.
Right. Gotcha, thank you. I appreciate it.
Language that up to this number would be?
Correct, that's what I would recommend to you, is that when you set the calendar, that you would say, you could put anywhere from up to five, up to four, up to three, up to two, it's really up to the committee, how many distance, potential distance learning days you would feel comfortable including in the calendar.
Can I just ask a question, moving away from emergency closure to professional development?
Mm-hmm.
So professional development days would obviously be asynchronous.
Correct.
So there would be a plan, a structure for that, to be sure that learning's continued?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and so we do have two of them from the statewide calendar this year that's included. The statewide count, you know, we could do up to four, and that's something that we can talk about when we set next year's calendar.
So this winter, and I had asked Pete about that, this winter, when we're working on the 22-23 calendar, if we have the flexibility up to four or five, that's when we may say, we don't have to pay for subs, like, let's really maximize this, let's purposely plan these out when we want them to be, plan for asynchronous days so we can get high-quality professional development, we're not going, you know, but that would be for next year's calendar, because, so this year, we included two.
Correct.
But we could, this winter, we'll talk about whether we want to maximize that while RIDE is allowing us, because who knows, a couple of years from now, RIDE may say, nope, no more. Who knows? So, all right. Any other questions or comments about the first read? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero, so we will bring this policy up next month as a second read, and then we will also have some discussion about revising the current school calendar. All right, any communications anyone wants to mention? All right, our next meeting will be Wednesday, November 17th, here at seven o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:09?
So moved.
All in favor?